Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, January 7th, 2014. I believe, Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Carrasco, Correia, Labaj, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Corret's moves, Fuentes seconds, next?
Communitar resolutions for approval.
O'Farrell moves, Bonin seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, it is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise and we'll be led in our flag salute by Mitch Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you could all please put your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Anyway, I want to welcome everyone back. I hope you had a very enjoyable holiday season, and I wish you good health and success in the year 2014. So, Madam Clerk, would it be appropriate for us to go through the agenda at this point in time?
Mr. President, before we begin, there are requests to continue items 1B to February 7th.
Without objection.
Item 12 to January 10th.
Without objection.
And item 15 to January 8th.
Without objection.
Items 1 through 3 are items which public hearing, items known as for public hearing. A motion is required for the necessity application for Council 9, item 2.
Okay, I'll make that motion. I need a second, because Mr. Price isn't here. Okay. To grant, the motion will be to grant. And this is again for Mr. Price. We have some cards on that. Let's just get them out of the way. John Walsh, please come
Yes, sir. This is item 1?
This is item 2.
Item 2, right. Okay, item 2 is the application for determination of public convenience or necessity for alcohol sales for off-site consumption at Johnny's Market. 100% against it. You're going to vote it in. You understand, when you do that, you add to the number of hit-and-run accidents. We lead the American hit-and-run accidents, and we lead them in alcohol. And as you know, last week, the son of a judge and the grandson of a judge was hit and run, and the blood of that child, 23-year-old, is on your hands for approving every single liquor license. The man who did it is on the prowl, and he's drunk now, and maybe he'll buy some alcohol at Johnny's Market, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, we're now prepared to vote on how many items? I think one of the item 1s, I don't know which, if it's 1B or 1A, or maybe both of them are set to be continued, is it?
Yes, there's a request to also continue item 1A to January 22nd.
Okay, without objection. So let's prepare to vote on the remaining item.
And, Susan, Mr. President, for item 3, I believe there's cards on that item. Anyone to hold that one for cards?
Okay, Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy, Happy New Years, come forward, and Mr. Walsh, on item number 3.
Yes, Mr. President, Happy New Year to everybody. I wish all my fans Happy New Year. I'm for this item, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, Mr. Walsh, item 3.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. It's been 20 days since I appeared before you. There's some really hot items on my website. This is the dumbest, one of the dumbest agenda items I ever saw. It concerns revising the police permit fee schedule. They're changing, they're reducing it from $253 to $248. You want me to give you the $5. What is this? You're reducing it by five bucks? You're wasting our time up here? And then we have the false alarm fee. Well, that should be, that should be $1,000. It should be at least as much as the jaywalking. And what are you doing there? You're changing it from $159 to $162. $3 more. Remember, pull a false alarm and kill somebody, $162. Jaywalk, $500. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, now let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, for item 3, the ordinance will be held over for one week, if not reconsidered.
Okay, well hopefully we'll have enough folk before the end of the day, and we'll take that up again. So can we move to the next section? Items 4 through 9, I believe.
Items 4 through 9 are items which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members, specials. Mr. Labaj?
Number 5.
5. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Joe Buscaino, number 7. Mr. Englander?
Postpone on item 9 till February 5th.
Okay, item 9, continue to February 5th, was it? Okay, without objection. Let's vote on what's left. There is something left, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, let's open the roll, uh, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
And for item 4, the ordinance will be held over for a second reading for one week, if not reconsidered.
Okay, all right, let's move on.
Items 10 through 25 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Bonin?
Could we hold item 20 for a minute? I have a substitute motion.
Let's hold item 20 at Mr. Bonin's request. Members, any other request on your part? Okay, how many, or what cards do we have on this item?
Cards on items 10, 13, 16, 17, 19, and 25.
Okay, well let's hold those items, and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. If we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, Madam, Mr. Buscaino?
On item 14, I'm sorry, 18 forthwith, please.
18 forthwith. Okay, Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
That brings Council to presentations or items called special.
Mr. Labaj, are you ready with your presentation? So at this point in time, we want to turn the floor over to Mr. Labaj.
Thank you very much. Steve Simon, and if everybody want to join us, and then Steve, I'm going to have you help me introduce everybody that's here. But, Mr. President, is a special gathering of folks right here this morning. After a 32-year, a great 32 years of service to the city of Los Angeles, Regina Houston-Swain, our General Manager, the Department of Disability, is retiring. I give you a big hand and a kiss, Regina. Very good. It's very special, as you know, that the history, that in 1973-75, ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, the office in Mayor Bradley's office was opened for the Office of Disability, and the great period of Mayor Bradley's administration, and so many times, he opened the doors as wide as can be for all needs and causes of good. And the Office of Disability was on the 21st floor, and I was on the 21st floor, because I was on the Mayor Bradley's Youth Council back then. And he merged all these people together, because there were needs in this city that he recognized so greatly. And Regina was part of that team, starting off many, many years ago. Through the years that she worked, and the great job that she did, she helped make this department full, instead of just an office. So mayors come and go, but the challenge of disability is every day. And bringing that focus to us, working with the Public Works Department, working with the Building and Safety for Accessibility, having great commissioners be the voice of the community, which is so important of that. In 19, excuse me, in 2004, she was the intern executive director of the department, and became the permanent director in 2005. She has a master's of arts degree and in psychology from the California State University, Northridge. Mitch, proud graduate of Matador, if I must say. And she's an accomplished artist and musician, and to play in her artworks in each of the six art shows that are produced by the department, which is our best program, I think. When you bring people to art, whatever the case may be, and you bring those with disability who can't be stopped from achieving greatness, because their heart and soul and the lead of the department gives her that love, you create these art programs that you see on the Henry Pivio Bridge that crosses the city hall of people from around our city who come for the art program. That's you, Regina, who created that, and your artistic heart and soul that created that. So I'm just pleased that over the course of time that I've been here, we've worked together, pleased to be the former chair of that committee. And I want to ask my colleague, Mitchell Farrell, who was right around me somewhere in a moment, to come join me as well, because this is key to us, that we recognize greatness here. And know that I want to call on, before anything, Mitchell Farrell, who's now the chairman of this committee that oversees our department. Regina's retired, as you know, we want to say that. Stephen Simon has learned from Regina and did such a great job, and now is the general manager. Before, I'm going to ask you to speak, I want to ask Mitch to say a few words, and I want to ask Stephen to say a few words. Mitch, thank you. I know I caught you on the side right there.
That's all right. Thank you, Tom. Colleagues, I stand with Tom Labaj today, and just acknowledging the great service over the last 32 years of Ms. Houston-Swain for giving so much to this city. And what I'm really curious about is her music skills. She's a musician, so I want to learn more about that. But I didn't have the great pleasure of serving with you, so, but I am honored to acknowledge your 32 years of service to the city, and I look very forward to working with your successor. So congratulations. Well done, job well done.
Good job, Mitch. And the great thing, too, is you see, whether it's in the art field, music field, dance, or athletics, who replaces who? And who's the mentor, who gets mentor? Stephen, you're the head of this department now, but Regina was your boss, and for those years, she kept you motivated, which you had, to do the great things. And now I want to ask you to say a few words and introduce some of our very special guests and commissioners.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. For probably first time ever, I'll try and be brief here, but I have to say, whatever direction we're taking in the department, wherever we're going in the future, nothing that we are going to do could be possible were it not for Regina Houston-Swain. She has built this department, she's protected and defended this department, she has made sure that we are here to make sure the rights of people with disabilities are fully realized here in the city of Los Angeles. So that said, she has been a mentor to me. I'm forever grateful for that. Joining us today are her husband, her sister, and her daughter. Joining us today are some of the key staff in the Department on Disability, the ADA Coordinator from the airports. We've got folks turned out here to really honor her incredible work.
And our commissioners.
Uh, I'm?
I'm getting there.
And two of our disability commissioners, Commissioner Rivera here, Commissioner Driver-Gordon behind us, former Commissioner Luis Mata, who has joined the department and now is one of our ADA coordinators. So again, thank you so much. Thank you, Regina. Please, welcome.
Good job. Let's give a big hand for Regina.
Yeah, please give her a big round of applause. And I just want to say, thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for really helping me with the death festival this time. You were just phenomenal, and I appreciate you. But it's time for you to do whatever it is you want to do. But anyway, thank you for everything. Let's give her another round of applause.
Thank you so much. I'd just like to say, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the people of Los Angeles. I couldn't have done anything without my coworkers and colleagues. Tom Labaj and Herb Wesson have championed the department. We've had the support of the mayor and council in general. And I just want to say, thank you, City of Los Angeles, for what you've given me. Thank you very much.
Regina, I want to introduce, introduce the family. Introduce your husband.
This is my husband, Houston Swain.
Say hello. Hello.
This is my daughter, Alicia Love.
Hi.
And my sister, Pamela Houston-Ham. Thank you. Now we'll have more time together. Thank you so much.
Regina, I just want your family to know, there's no bigger angel for disability, for those to speak, for those who can't speak, for those to fight. Remember, there was a chance to eliminate the department. You fought, and we fought together, but you fought. You were the leader. She's an angel in the city of angels. Long retirement, Regina. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tom.
We got big pictures in the back. I love you. She's so good to work with. All right, we'll go this way, right there.
Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, it's my understanding that we do have a commissioner that's with us today. I believe that to be item 10?
Yes.
If we could ask her to come forward, and I have one card from Mr. John Walsh. Doctor, thank you for coming. We have one public comment card, and then I will defer to you.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Don't miss what's up there. We 100% support Dr. Sonia Molina. Now, she's been vetted. Now, the previous mayor was very, very slipshod about vetting. We know that unlike a previous nominee for a commission, she has no history of possession of kiddie porn, and as did a previous person that you voted 15 to nothing when Vieragosa was the mayor. So we 100% support her. Visit HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you very much. I would ask if you'd like to say a few words. Go right ahead, but we're going to try to move this quickly for you. So please, the floor is yours.
I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to work with the city and enhance the arts and parks of the city. I'm very excited with the, some of the new ideas as to how to expand it. So I look forward to working with the commission.
Thank you. Okay, with that said, Mr. O'Farrell, I think we'll move forward. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to do a couple of public comment cards, and then, Mr. Buscaino, I think I'm going to defer to you. So if we could have Sean Murphy and Mr. Walsh, this is general public comment. Go right ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Yes. Happy New Year, Mr. President and the City Council. I'd like to wish Michelle Obama a happy birthday, two weeks from Fri, a week from Friday. She's going to be 50. I'm not far from it, Mr. President. I'll be celebrating in April. We need to keep our streets clean. Safety is important for 2014. I heard about Mr. Baca's retirement. I'm against it. I hope he changes his mind. I met Mr. Baca at John Perhour's funeral. I talked to him. He does a fine job for the LA Sheriff. So what if he made, we make, so what if he made a few mistakes? We all make mistakes, Mr. President. I'm sorry, but I'm praying that he changes his mind. We don't want to lose this man. I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. As far as Mr. Baca's concerned, in the morning yesterday, he was smiling, he was, he was running. Then the FBI came to him, somebody tipped him off, that he's about to be arrested. He's about to be arrested unless he resigns. I know it, you know it, everybody knows it. You don't see it in the newspaper. It reminds me when I lived in Ethiopia. We all knew what was happening from the street, not from the newspaper in Addis Ababa. Haile Selassie controlled it. Here we have the mayor. He is an enormous problem. There are no FBI agents here today. They got you over here on sex charges, minor things. As far as Lee Baca, he's the shame of Los Angeles County. Stay away from here. This is a poison area to visit tourists, even our top cop. And I think that what they should do to Mr. Baca now, you don't see that stuff happening over here at LAPD, do you? I think they should put him on suicide watch, because that's about the only future Mr. Baca has now. And he better hire a really good lawyer, a criminal lawyer, because he's going to be criminally charged, and everybody knows it. You won't read it in the newspaper, but my favorite newspaper, of course, is La Pinion, which put me on the front page the other day. And I just want, and also, in Hollywood, thanks to Labaj, they tore down six ficus trees for a developer. It's all on our website. Come to our website for the alternate history of what's really happening in Los Angeles, and no one has ever challenged anything. And I want to say that it was, I hope the mayor had a lot of fun in Australia. You know what I mean. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Buscaino, you want to go to item 7? I do have one card. Okay, and that card is, no, I've just been informed that that hearing has already been done, so we have fulfilled our requirement where it relates to a public hearing. So, Mr. Buscaino, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, the item before you is a reward that we are going to approve on, a tragic, tragic incident that occurred in Watts, when a child was killed and murdered in his father's arms. The father was mistakenly identified as a gang member purely just by wearing a purple shirt. You know, oftentimes, we hear in these chambers how rewards don't serve as an effective tool. But I'm so proud of the work that was done by the community, that clearly took a stand and said, "We will not put up with people killing kids." And the work from our LAPD detectives, the Watts Gang Task Force, a number of community-based organizations came together and said, "Enough is enough." And the item today that we're going to approve will fulfill that obligation, that commitment we made as a council, and give the reward to that individual who came forward and provided LAPD detectives with the information that led to the arrest and conviction of this, of the knucklehead who committed this horrific, horrific crime. So again, I want to stand and thank the Watts community, the LAPD, the Watts Gang Task Force, and a number of others who came forward to provide the detectives the information leading to the arrest and conviction of this brutal murder. Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino, and you're right, it is not okay to kill a kid. With that said, let's, and that is a horrific story. Let us please vote on this, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, now I'm going to be jumping back and forth a little, members, with general public comment and our items, trying to move this along. So, Richard Robinson? Richard, come on up. We're going to do general public comment. Don't run, Richard. Take your time. And this is general public comment.
Mr. President, members, Sheriff Baca's retirement comes as a surprise to no one. His department, like the Los Angeles Police, has come under severe criticism for years. Sir, I hope that the critics of Sheriff Baca will recall he almost became Homeland Security Department Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. And please, if we could, no applause. Let's move on. We'll go from general public comment to item 13. Item 13 was held special for a card. Mr. Walsh, we're on item 13, held special by you, sir.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You were off, but I wasn't. Kept posting. Okay, this is, this is Mr. John Kirk-Muckrey, interim general manager. This is his salary. This is what his salary is going to be. If you read the agenda item, there's no mention of how much the salary is. I went to the file, 13-17-25, there's no mention of what the salary is. I understand he's being paid $212,000. This is obscenity. If you're interested in obscenity, come to HollywoodHighlands.org and read our porn post, which concerns obscenity. HollywoodHighlands.org, Mr. John Muckrey, these salaries they're giving are obscene they're handing out. We don't even know how much he's getting. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, for item 13, the salary for the interim general manager of Department of Transportation is $252,835.92.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to take one general public comment card. Is Brian here? Barajas? Yeah. I'm going to get you up early, Brian. Usually you are one of the later ones. I'm going to get you up now. Brian Barajas, general public comment.
All right, so I'll just make, yeah, two minutes. Okay. I turned in a document called Prometheus Science on I turned in a document called Prometheus Science on the subject of Friday's webcast by Lyndon H. LaRouche. Now, his point is very simple. The new year is very simple. All of us are Prometheusans. We are against the philosophies of Zeus. Zeus created the Peloponnesian Wars—or any wars of history says this. These evil bastards, the British Crown, that bitch, that drug pusher, Queen Elizabeth, that freak.
Mr. President, this is outside the scope of the city of Los Angeles.
Brian, you do have to—
Yeah, I know.
—just discuss things that we directly or indirectly have—
I might as well kick off the new year. So anyways, so this is—the this is what we are, all of us. As I indicated before, we are now in thermonuclear World War III. This is a fact. The problem is that we take too many vacations and we detach ourselves from reality. Now, the reality is simple, actually. We are falling behind. We have a president, and we have Hillary Clinton, who's bought off by Wall Street, and we still don't have Glass-Steagall. There are moves for it, but we still don't have it. What it this implies is we are neglecting our duties, our constitutional oath, and that's a fact. We need to push this thing, this freak show, this insanity, out of the United States forever. This planet has to survive. We need thermonuclear fusion.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge, item five, Mr. Labonge?
Members, this is going to—I think—one thing I'm going through right now, I'm doing a lot of deep thinking about the years that I've had the opportunity to serve the city of Los Angeles, not just in this role, but in other roles. And previously, the Department of Transportation had a parking administrator. But recently, under a previous administration, they dissolved that and put it all over here. Parking is a big issue in Los Angeles. And what counts is when you have one person. In a huddle, there's not 11 people talking, there's one, a quarterback. In a situation here, what I'm trying to articulate is there be a parking administrator. There's one person that you focus on and could get answers to directly to move forward. So this is going to be studied. The department representatives are here. They welcome the study. There was a previous administration that dissolved that, and I think it's a good thing when you could point to someone who is an administrator of a parking function, get answers, get results, and find parking. That being said, this is just a study. I ask for an aye vote, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, it's my understanding that we—I want to say, item 11 needs to be reconsidered?
Yes.
So, on item 11, if we could vote for reconsideration, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Okay, and that was to take a public comment card, correct?
Correct.
Okay, it says, "Batman, Mr. Constituent Turkey." So if that Batman, Mr. Constituent Turkey could come forward. You need to come up now, sir.
Mr. Wesson, La Opinión, John Walsh, Juan Akala, and Batman, Mr. Herman make the front page of La Opinión, which are rude comments about gloves and masks and a cape—
He is not talking about this item.
But I defend—
No, 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 Ms. Herman, on this item.
What I want to do is defend people from the corruption, the scandal by building in safety to manipulate all of you to pay these ridiculous fees. Yes, ridiculous fees. For what? As you see on this agenda here, if they focus in, there's more than 10, including the other page on seven, when it talks about what? The resolution for removing the following properties from the rent escrow account prior to 2013. And today, the family affected by this at South Kenmore Avenue, or also on page seven under Ms. Daisy at Mudford Street, I brought it to your attention that the city continues to disrupt, haggle you, all of you in Los Angeles, for citations and ridiculous amounts of citations. And why? The reason behind it, because the city is hurting for money. And so, when you want to come to Los Angeles and live, expect the city to bring out all their fraud, all their mistakes by building in safety, by L.A. Housing Authority. And for what reason? To squander all of you for fees, charges, and added expenses to your what? Rent escrow? Likely, yes, that's the situation, as all these communicators on this side affect my public comment, speaking when I'm speaking and interrupting.
Thank you, no, you're on the subject, okay. So let's vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, I need a little help here from the audience. I have a card that I really can't make out the last name. The first name is David, and then there's a reference to New Business. So David, if you could please come up and state your full name, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good morning, Honorable President and Honorable Members of Council. My name is David, and the last name you saw there, it's actually our company name. I'm David with Naturepedic, and we are excited. We are a new business in L.A., so some good news for you. But first and foremost, I want to thank all of you for your public service. Our story is a nice one. We started by making organic crib mattresses. Our founder is an expert on chemicals, and years ago, he was horrified to see what was in children's mattresses. So we started making organic crib mattresses in a suburb of Cleveland with Amish workers. Our company was so successful, we're in over 600 baby stores right now, that we now are making adult luxury organic mattresses. And it was with great pride that we chose Los Angeles to be our first freestanding store. Our four is at—our store is at 456 South Robertson. We will be having a grand opening in February 9th, which you all be attended to join us. We want to get active in the community. It's a wonderful business, and it's a wonderful opportunity for Los Angeles. And I'm just here, thankfully, it's 20 degrees below zero in Cleveland right now, so I couldn't be happier to be here right now. And we certainly just wanted to say hello and welcome, and I'll stick around if anybody wants to get my card, if we can do anything to help the community. But the big news is, is that we're opening our first freestanding adult store, and we chose to do it in Los Angeles. We think it's a wonderful city, a wonderful area, and I'm happy to say hello or answer any questions any of you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Once—I'm sorry, sir. Mr. President, can I answer his question?
Yes.
The question was, "What's the address?" The address is 456 South Robertson. And we've already been active with certain groups, like the Environmental Media Awards, and we've participated in some Hollywood events, which is exciting for us, being from Ohio. So again, we're thrilled to be here.
Will the founder be here on—
Yes, the company name is Naturepedic, and the website is simply naturepedic.com. And you can find all the information about the baby and the adult mattresses there. And our founder and some of our top science people will all be there on February 9th for the store opening.
Okay, well, good luck to you. And if you didn't know, know that I am a Clevelander born and raised, so congratulations to you.
Thank you, sir. And once again, thank you all for your service.
All right. Now, we're going to go to item 16, called "Special" by a card, Mr. Constituent. And I can't make—well, yeah. Mr. Constituent, item 16.
As the time runs, before I get up here, it's very well—
No, no, wait a minute. I called your name, you need to be ready to go.
So do you—
I'm not going to wait—
You expect me to run up here, sir?
No, in fact, you want to—you want to speak, I'll let you. But I'm telling you, when we call your name, start coming to the podium, and you did not, sir. So speak.
So you're saying I'm forced to rush up here?
Okay, you're finished on this one. You're finished. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. When we call your name, come forward. You did not. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Seventeen, Mr. Walsh. Item seventeen, John, item seventeen.
Did I make it in time?
No, you do a good job, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, this is a reward for the apprehension and conviction of people responsible for the murder of Harvey Kohn. You take a long time. He was murdered on September 19th. We had another murder recently in November. You're just doing a—for Gatto's father, you're doing a—putting out a big press release, big press conference, getting your picture in the paper, two months, no suspects for Harvey Kohn and no suspects for Joseph Gatto. This whole—it's a farce. It's a waste of time. Most of these rewards mean nothing, except getting your picture in the newspaper and on television. HollywoodHighlands.org, check out our website, see the pornography on there.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Has the amendment on 20 been circulated?
Yes, Mr. President.
Why don't we deal with item 20? So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
It's adopted as amended.
All righty, so now we move to—Madam Clerk, I think that brings us to 19?
Yes.
And that was called "Special" by Mr. Sean Murphy. Mr. Murphy, please come forward on item 19.
Yes, item 19, I support, 10. 10 ayes.
Thank you, and you might get 11. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, so that brings us to item 25, called "Special" by Cards, I believe. And that's—Mr. Murphy, that's you as well. Item 25.
Yes, item 25, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have some items where we did not have a dozen members. If you would call those items, I think we vote for reconsideration, and then we actually vote on the items?
Yes, that's for items three and four.
Okay, so let's vote first on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, let's vote on the actual items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Okay, I think I have a public comment from Mr. Batman, Mr. Constituent. General public comment.
Saturday, La Opinión. And I should run up here because, obviously, some races believe that a disabled person should do what they're told, based on what they think is possible and better for you. But not that it's a beautiful—not that it was beautiful, but that in the end, there was a certain sense of order, not there, not in L.A., not here in Los Angeles. Why? Because we still have discrimination and racist issues and biasness going on here. Americans, the frustration and conflict experienced in this role are not woven for all Americans. Homelessness is an issue. Homelessness is a crisis, and that affects the lives of many. That all of you who discriminate, Mr. Krikorian, and on this side, Mr. Fuentes, we have to get involved and listen to the public. The public needs your support in ending homelessness in Los Angeles. Homeless people do not deserve to be kicked off public sidewalks, do not get their items destroyed, or thrown in the trash, Mr. Wesson, because this is not a society of discrimination. No. The wave also affects the affluent family and friends of homeless people, with no outlook for a history that this city has hindered the lives of many. And going off topic, yes, Saturday, La Opinión, John Walsh, Juan Akala, and Mr. Herman, representing who? All of you, Los Angeles, front page of the La Opinión on the 21st of Saturday. Yes, because what? We wear ridiculous gloves. And what? We wear a mask. But I wear a mask for a purpose, to prove to all of you children that are watching, the thousands of you, versus the millions of Angelenos listening, that the corruption and bullshit here is so offensive that you should pay attention to it.
Thank you, thank you. Your time is expired. Okay, I think, Mr. City Attorney, we have a special. Mr. Labonge, is this special one, maybe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that the City Council offer a reward—for information leading to the arrest of the suspects who committed the home invasion murder of Joseph Gatto on November 13th, 2013, in the 2,800 block of Bright Lane. Immediate action is required in order to apprehend the suspect for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And, Mr. Labonge, before you start, it should—it's worth mentioning, as a FYI, that items seven and eight today were actual payouts on reward motions. So with that said, Mr. Labonge, Mr. O'Farrell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I'm joined here with Councilman O'Farrell and Mr. Buscaino, longtime family friend of the Gatto family. As you know, the tragedy that took place in Silver Lake. With us today is William Hayes, commander of the robbery homicide division, as requested by the Los Angeles Police Department, as we go forth in this investigation. Captain, could you just say a few words?
Certainly. As you're aware, the death of Mr. Gatto occurred on November 12th in the evening. His body was discovered on the 13th. What we've done is, we've done a number of investigative steps, but we're at a point where we believe someone out there knows or is aware of who is responsible for Mr. Gatto's death, but is reluctant to come forward. Hopeful that this reward will stimulate that individual or individuals to come forward and give us the evidence we need to further the investigation in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And along with our mayor and our chief of police today, at 2:00 in the afternoon, there will be a public announcement of this. So I ask for an aye vote and forthwith.
All right, with that said, let's vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Forthwith at Mr. Labonge's request. I think I have one general public comment card left. Mr. Marine, Henry Marine.
Yes, Happy New Year. I want to thank JFK for warning me. Not to ask public fund administrators what they can do for me until I had proof in black and white of what I've done for the people. And that proof is a DD 214 form, hacking code checks, dubs, W2s, receipts from the IRS, Social Security Department, and everybody else. Now, you know, y'all all got the same rights as Martin Ludlow. You're going to count for the time and money of others in the first place involuntarily, or you can wait for the deputy—I mean, the district attorney to knock on your door and say you is guilty of a felony. and say you is guilty of a felony. Now, if you is a union person, you won't get to work again in the union for 13 years. If you, uh, city councilman, you ain't gonna get to hold public office for four more years. So when y'all gonna wake up? Mister Correian, I got a agree with him and Mister Bernard Box on, on the budget committee. They say, we don't, we don't live in no perfect world. And we know your, people on the budget committee ain't been accounting for our money. They've been, it shows, MOU show, every percent, the members of Hacken Bowden City Council agreed to take from departments receiving construction, federal and state construction funds, and put union trusts in lieu of providing them to government employee pension benefit plans. Now, what's your problem? Look at me, Mister Box. I mean, Mister, Mister Wesson, first word in Wesson is "we," the last word is "on." Now get this on the agenda and get it taken care of. What's your problem? CD-10, you, you can't make the same mistakes as your predecessors. And you know what happened to your predecessor, Mister Wesson? Now, now, don't make that, vacate that office again before it's time. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mister Marine. Uh, that concludes today's general, uh, public comment. Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Announcements, members? Any, and Mister Labons?
Announcement before we go into adjourning motions.
Any other announcements? Mister Englander, if everyone in the council chambers could please rise? We are at the adjourning motion portion. Now Mister Labons?
A year ago, our friend Hugh Houser passed, and, uh, we still, uh, celebrate him, and he's still celebrated with his work. I wanted to start, uh, my brief adjourning motions with remembering someone who went before us who's still with us, who absolutely loved anything that was interesting, and what a great guy that he was. This afternoon, in the community, we're gonna see the sunset from the observatory in memory of Hugh Houser on the date of his passing. Mister President, uh, since there has been time pass, I just, for the clerk's benefit, call some names of people we should remember. Uh, John, uh, uh, David Eisenhower, Sheldon Douglas Eisenhower, who was the son of Dwight Eisenhower. He passed recently, uh, for that family. Let's remember John, uh, Sheldon Dowd Eisenhower. Also, for anybody my age or older, so that's about all of you, uh, Phil Everly, the Everly Brothers, rock and roll, unbelievable, uh, duo, who was so special. We should remember them. Also, uh, the original race car, STP, Andy Grautatelli, his family, which our family knew, a great guy, lived into his 90s. Uh, wonderful guy, wonderful family. Shall he be remembered in his work that he did with Mario Andretti and his cars and his conventional work in auto racing as well? And lastly, I'd like to ask that Frederick Reinstein, who was a constituent of mine, and the sad thing sometimes is you don't know how special is the person next to you. Uh, but, uh, as this man who lived in my district was in the news business as well, was in the Dallas City Hall on that Sunday morning, uh, when we all saw, uh, the tragedy, uh, uh, again unfold, of the greatest tragedy of the death of Kennedy, John F. Kennedy, but that of, uh, the witness the shooting. A newsman, a loving man, and a wonderful wife who was very involved in the community, involved in many things in the neighborhood. I ask we adjourn in memory of Frederick Reinstein, who was a very special man, who was a reporter and a great guy, a lover of arts. Thank you, Mister President, for all those who went before us.
Thank you, Mister Labons. Mister Englander.
Thank you very much, uh, Mister President, colleagues. I'm joined here today, uh, with one of our finest LAPD chiefs, Aguilar, Aguilar, and this is with great sadness that we inform you, uh, that Eduardo Maxion, an officer with Los Angeles Police Department, recently passed away in October of 2013. Ed was born in August, on August 18th, 1957, in the Philippines. He received a degree in theological studies at Fabius College of Bible in the Philippines before immigrating to the United States in 1983. In 1985, he joined the United States Marine Corps. He was named the Grand Old Man of his platoon, 3081, since at the age of 27, he was the eldest in his platoon. In 1989, he was activated for Operation Desert Storm. In 1996, he was appointed as a police officer with the General Services Police Department here in Los Angeles. After joining the city of Los Angeles, Ed maintained his reserve officer status in the Marine Corps. In 2000, he was activated for Kosovo Peacekeeping Force, and was activated again in 2003 and 2010 for Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan. In fact, as reserve, he served six tours, representing this country. In 2013, he was appointed as an officer with the Los Angeles Police Department. Today, we are joined, but with his, we are joined with his wife, Rodana, his sisters, Lolita and Nancy, parents, Isabel, Romero, who flew in from the Philippines just for today to be here with us. We are also joined, uh, with his, by his children, Ian and Carol, and, uh, we ask that, uh, we adjourn, uh, in Eduardo Maxion's remembrance, uh, and, uh, he served us well here, putting his life and his family, um, on the front lines to protect not only the city, but this country. Thank you.
Well done, Mister Englander. Uh, other adjourning motions? Mister Bonin.
Thank you, Mister President. Uh, colleagues, I ask today that, uh, we adjourn in memory of two members of the Pacific Palisades community. Pacific Palisades lost, uh, two people over the holidays, tragic deaths, one a few days before Christmas and one on New Year's Eve. One was a giant of a woman who lived a long and full and rich life, and one was a young man whose, uh, promising, long and full and rich life was just ahead of him and was killed tragically on New Year's Eve. That young man was named David Pragerson. He was 23 years old. Uh, many of us may know his family. His, uh, father Dean is a US District Court Judge who hears most of our Venice Beach Ocean Front Walk vending cases, and his grandson Harry, uh, was on the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. Uh, David recently graduated from UCLA, and he was working on movies and television shows, including a web, web-based soap opera series called The Bay. Uh, his friends said he was incredibly talented, creative, imaginative, and dedicated. They all said he was, uh, destined to be the next Spielberg, a claim that, that nobody has challenged. Uh, his father, at his funeral, his memorial service, uh, talked about his unique and uh, outsized and inspiring personality, and spoke of the Daveness of Dave. Uh, one of his friends told an anecdote about him, which I thought was incredibly amusing. Um, he once wore an LED, a shining light belt buckle to a bar with his phone number shining, so that all of the women would know what number to call after he left. LAPD is investigating this, uh, hi- his death. It was the result of a hit and run, uh, a few days after Christmas. Uh, he was walking across Chautauqua and, uh, was hit and, uh, was left there, abandoned and unattended. A passerby found his body, and his friends have been actively engaged with, uh, social media and technology in trying to assist LAPD in this investigation. The other adjourning motion I have today is for a Palisadian who is a legend. Mister Labons often asks people where they went to high school, and if he ever asked anybody where they went to high school and they said Pali High, that person probably had Rose Gilbert as a teacher. Uh, as the LA Times said, "To see Rose Gilbert, a non-stop five-foot dynamo in front of a high school classroom, was to see a master at work." "I'm on fire," she'd tell her 12th graders in room 204 at Pali Charter High School, and she'd emphasize that point by wearing a red plastic firefighter's helmet. Uh, she spent more than a half century imparting a love of Homer and Faulkner and Joyce to her students. Uh, she was there every semester for 50 years, well into her 90s. She, uh, lectured in English and on the classics. Uh, her favorites were The Great Gatsby and The Iliad. Uh, in her spare time, she coached academic decathlon, and she traveled the world avidly and supported the UCLA Bruins' men's and women's basketball teams. She was an award-winning teacher, and for a while, she was the oldest-serving full-time teacher in LAUSD. Uh, she was a bit of a celebrity in the community. She'd been featured on television. Uh, she died of, uh, age-related causes, uh, on December 17th at, uh, St. John's Hospital in Santa Monica. Uh, she had just retired in 2012 and 2013. I just met her last summer. Um, she said that one of her proudest accomplishments was the school's Maggie Gilbert Aquatic Center, which was named after her daughter, a swimmer and scholar who died in 2004. Uh, Rose herself donated $2 million and lent the school another $7,500,000 to complete that center in 2010. She could have retired, uh, quietly when she did so, but that wasn't enough for her. Uh, the day that they donate, they dedicated a drama classroom to her, she announced that she was going to work as a volunteer at the Venice Family Clinic, helping with battered women. Uh, she was a legend, Palisades loved her, uh, and she is, uh, sorely, sorely missed. Thank you. Thank you.
Mister Buscagno.
It's a great trivia, Mike. Uh, colleagues, it's with great sadness I ask that we adjourn, uh, in memory of John Pop Holland, a retired member of the Los Angeles Fire Department and longtime San Pedro resident. Pop Holland was born in Alfafo, Oklahoma, on July 17th, 1926, married the love of his life, Mary, his wife of 60 years, in 1944, and served his country during World War II as a sergeant in the US Army, um, Air Corps. He served, uh, with the 418th Night Fighter Squadron Squadron, and, um, saw action as a gunner and ground repair supervisor in the Pacific Campaign. Pop Holland joined the, uh, LA Fire Department in 1950 and served the city for 30 years before retiring, uh, to serve, and served the city, uh, before retiring to, but to spend more time with his beloved family and indulge in his hobbies of hunting, camping, and rebuilding old engines. Pop Holland was preceded in death by his, his wife, Mary, and his son Johnny. He is survived by his son Jim, daughter Janie, five grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren. Pop's memorial service will be held this Friday, January 10th, 11:00 AM, at Green Hills Mortuary in Rancho Palos Verdes. May he rest in peace. Also, um, I ask that, uh, we adjourn also in memory of, um, Coach Ag, as we call him, at San Pedro High School, Jerry Aguilar, a longtime San Pedro High School football coach, uh, who sadly passed away over the holiday recess. Coach Ag was born in Flagstaff, Arizona, in 1947, and later moved, uh, to the Harbor, graduating from Banning High School, uh, in Wilmington. After graduating, Coach Ag was drafted into the, into the army, serving as a combat medic during the Vietnam War. Following the war, Jerry became a nurse, but his true passion was coaching. He impacted so many lives at San Pedro High School, where, uh, his sayings, lessons, and warmth left a lasting impression on the countless young men who benefited from his teachings. Uh, Coach Ag is survived by his father, Ramon Aguilar, his wife of 41 years, Luis, his son, Raymond, uh, daughters Angela, Carrie, and Jennifer, numerous grandchildren and extended family members. Also, I want to say he's survived by a number of football players that he impacted. Um, funeral services were held on December 27th at Mary Star to the Sea Church in San Pedro. Coach Ag, we're gonna miss you. God bless you. Thank you for all that you've done for our, our young men in San Pedro. May, may you rest in peace.
Thank you. Uh, other, Mister Corretts?
Thank you, Mister President. Uh, I'd just like to say a little more about Phil Everly, because he was an essential part of our LA musical landscape. When we talk about the most significant acts of our Southern California recent musical heritage, like The Beach Boys and The Byrds and Linda Ronstadt, we're talking about performers who were significantly influenced by, uh, Phil and Don Everly, the Everly Brothers. Um, they, Phil usually was responsible for the higher harmonics, also wrote many of the songs. Um, and there are many other groups that were significantly influenced by them, from Simon and Garfunkel to The Beatles, to The Hollies, and much of country music as well. So, uh, their influence, uh, is still felt today. Uh, they were among the first 10 acts, uh, inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame when it was founded. Uh, they, uh, received the Grammy Lifetime Achievement Award in 1997, and, uh, not all of us are, are old enough to remember, uh, all of their hits, but they had 35 Top 100 hits in the 50s and 60s, were hugely popular. Um, you'll remember some of the songs, Wake Up Little Susie, Bye Bye Love, Cathy's Clown, and, you know, we probably all recognize, that are old enough to recognize them, 15 or 20, uh, others of their great songs. Uh, they served in the Marines. Um, they both dealt with, uh, personal issues such as addiction, had significant solo careers, uh, were tremendous guitarists as well as vocalists, and did, uh, a lot of charitable benefits. Phil Everly, uh, was a lifetime smoker, to which his family attributes, uh, his death, sadly, and he's survived by his wife, Patty Everly, and by, of course, his brother, Don. And may you rest in peace.
Thank you, uh, Mister Corretts. Any other, uh, adjourning motions? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.